Norwood City Council Meeting to Order. If everyone can please rise for a moment of reflection and the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen, here. Mrs. Hoover, here. Ms. Royce, here. Mrs. Bowling, here. Mr. Moore, here. Mr. Gerton, here. Mr. Brayden.
We have six members present this evening. That means for anything, any motions to suspend the rules, we will need everyone present to vote in favor of that. Moving on to amendments of the agenda. We have four items. We have adding a resolution regarding a street levy. Adding a resolution regarding the operating expense renewal levy. An ordinance regarding the CRAs. And adding a finance committee report from August 26. Mrs. Franzen.
I move that we amend the agenda as stated.
Mrs. Hoover.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen, yes. Mrs. Hoover, yes. Ms. Royce, yes. Mrs. Bowling, yes. Mr. Moore, yes. Mr. Gerton, yes.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to next items on the agenda. Those are the minutes of previous meetings. We have minutes from August 6th, September 2nd, and September 9th. Mr. Gerton.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as if read.
Motion by Mr. Gerton to accept the minutes as if read. Ms. Royce.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Royce. Any discussion? And just to confirm, Mr. Gerton, this is for all three sets?
Yes, sir. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. Any discussion? Motion on the floor by Mr. Gerton, seconded by Ms. Royce, is to accept all three sets of minutes as if read. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen, yes. Mrs. Hoover, yes. Ms. Royce, yes. Mrs. Bowling, yes. Mr. Moore, yes. Mr. Gerton, yes.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to special presentations. We have Mr. Gabbard with the Norwood Recreation. All right, Mr. Gabbard, you're on.
It's the middle one? The middle one?
Uh, the left arrow. I'm sorry, the right arrow. Okay, hold on.
Yeah, right arrow.
All right. Two hundred and fifty thousand touches. I'll come back to that. But I just want to thank you for the opportunity to come and do my yearly report to council and about Norwood Recreation. The rec, just to refresh, just real quick, the rec is, um, we were purchased in the spring of 2021, and then we opened in January of 2022. Just a couple of things about the importance of play. We never know, we never, we are never more fully alive, more completely ourselves, or more deeply engrossed than anything than when we are playing. Another quote, "The opposite of play is not work, it's depression." And then one final one, "We don't stop playing because we grow old, we grow old because we stop playing." This year, we've made some increases, and we're pretty proud of that. Our single, uh, membership rate has gone from four twenty-three to four hundred and three. Our family rate, two sixty, up to five hundred. Our senior rate has gone from seventy-three to a hundred and forty-eight, and then our youth rate went down just a couple from thirty to twenty-eight. But we did make some changes this year on, on, um, ages and, and how that can, uh, who, what age you gotta be in, who you gotta be with a parent, and things like that. But I think that number was, uh, more reflective in the family going up, where just the people were just getting the family ones. Water Works, we had a banner year this year. It's our second year that we contracted with Cincinnati Pool Management. We were open seventy-three days, which was eleven days less than 2024. We started five days late because of extreme cold, if you remember that. If you can remember that, now that we're finally getting out of these ninety-degree days. But, uh, we did start out this season that we couldn't even get the pool open because the temperature was like seventy degrees, and that's a little bit dangerous for anybody. So that, we had, uh, the pool championships this year, so that took away three days. Um, we had Norwood Day, which was a day, so a few days that we did down. But our passes were up to, uh, we were at one ninety-two. Last year, we were at one ninety. Our day passes, uh, we sold a hundred, I mean, uh, six thousand four hundred and ninety-three of those. That's a hundred and fifty-one up from last year. Our season passes in twenty-three, we, um, we made fifty-three thousand five hundred, and, uh, which was an average of six hundred and thirty-eight dollars a day. Last year, we, we bumped up to sixty-three thousand, and that gave us an average of seven hundred and fifty-two days, dollars a day. This year, we were eighty-five thousand, which gave us an average of eleven hundred dollars a day. We, we've just really been kicking it over there at Water Works. We've added a lot of improvements, uh, that we've done at the pool and trying to make, uh, your experience at the pool just better and better each time. Here's just a list of, uh, the programs. As you can see, it gets quite extensive, but we're, we are a member of the Parks and Recreation Association. And on here, if you notice, at the end of each line, we kind of put a total of how many. So like the youth basketball, we had fourteen teams. There's nine people a team. It's a hundred and thirty-six kids. We were up five teams this year. So as you go down through there, you can see we have youth basketball, youth volleyball, adult basketball, adult soccer, softball, volleyball, cornhole, taekwondo, fitness just for you, yoga. We're currently looking for an instructor. If anybody knows an instructor that would be interested in coming and, putting on a yoga class, we would be interested in speaking with them about that. Our therapeutic, therapeutic aquatics, water aerobics. It's not really aerobics. It's water exercise, stretching. We average about sixteen, uh, in our morning classes and about twelve in our evening classes. Those numbers have just jumped as of yesterday tremendously, because we got word that a sporty was closing on. So we had, we signed up thirteen, thirteen seniors yesterday, because they're gonna lose their water aerobics over there. We gave another twenty-five applications out that people wanted information on, and poor Clinton probably took fifty calls. People asking about, hey, what do you offer? When are the classes? And all that. So we're really trying to capitalize on that. We're actually gonna, uh, we, we've got contact information, and we're gonna be speaking with the people that were the instructors over there. See if we can entice them to come over and be a part of us. So we will probably, right now, we had, we just bumped up to two classes, uh, Monday, Wednesday, Friday mornings. We're probably gonna bump that to at least three, and then, uh, we'll see how the evening class goes as well. We might be bumping that up. So that's, uh, real exciting news, and, uh, just kind of really fell in our lap. Excuse me. Our Easter egg drop, we, uh, we have over five hundred kids that show up to that. It's just incredible, uh, the amount of, that comes to that. Our barracuda swim team, uh, super, super proud of them. Again, they, they won their, um, the league champs this year again. They're up to a hundred and ten kids. Three years ago, they had twenty-five kids. And our, the, my coaching staff has done an outstanding job on recruiting and retaining and building excitement in that program. Again, we've been doing a lot of things at the pool to try to, uh, do improvements. This year, we had, we hosted the, the, um, swim champs. Uh, probably upwards of ten thousand people came through Norwood in those three days. So, uh, we were really proud of that. We got nothing but outstanding comments, and people saying, hey, could we just have it here every year? That's how good a job that our swim team did, and, and all of our staff that was behind the scenes and stuff like that. So that was, we were really, really proud of that. We helped co-sponsor, um, the comedy event, and then, um, and help out with music on, uh, Mills. We do some paint sips, some summer activ-, we did a new summer program activity this year. Again, kind of fell in our lap. Uh, the high school does a free lunch program. They came and wanted to see if we had any kids that might, uh, be, help, help them to build their numbers. So, um, my staff and I, we sat down, we started brainstorming, and we came up with the idea of that if you bought a youth, uh, pass to the pool, what you could do is you could drop your kid off at nine-thirty. We would do an activity with them. At eleven o'clock, we would walk them across the street and have free lunch, then walk them back, and then those that wanted to go to the pool, we would shuttle to the pool, and then those that didn't, the parents pick them up. So we had them from like nine-thirty, twelve-thirty. Worked out great. We had about thirty-five kids in that, uh, and they all loved it. So we're gonna be looking at seeing if we could potentially expand that program a little bit more and, uh, get some more kids in. We did, uh, we sponsored a free throw, uh, contest at Norwood Day. We have big-time wrestling. Does anybody know that? We have big-time wrestling that we host at, in our gym, and there'll be a hundred and fifty, two hundred people that come and watch that. It's hilarious. It's real entertaining. If you've never done it, you know, grab your kids, your grandkids, come check it out. It's, it's a lot of fun. The cool thing is, is they turn around, and they donated over five hundred toys for us to give out at Christmas time, uh, to families and stuff like that. They also help out with our, meals that we give away at Thanksgiving too. So they are very much a partner with us. Our trunk or treat, over four hundred kids be thinking if anybody wants to get a table this year, it's a great place to be able to, uh, meet a lot of kids and a lot of parents, because they all come through and they're all dressed up. The cool thing about the trunk or treat, it's an indoor. It's in our gym. So it's indoors, it's safe. You don't gotta worry about bad candies or anything like that. And because it's indoors, you don't have to wear a coat. You can actually showcase that, uh, that costume that your mom and dad spent, you know, a lot of money on, uh, because it's too cold outside or because it's raining. So, uh, it's just a, been a, a huge event for us. Our food and toy drives at Thanksgiving and Christmas. We have this thing called Santa at the rec. We had a hundred and fifty kids come through and sit on Santa's lap. That was pretty cool. Uh, we do a father-daughter dance. We did a mom prom. Uh, we co-sponsored in with the Shakespeare in the Park. We, uh, we sponsored some, uh, toy, uh, storytime in the parks. We did some, uh, dodgeball pop-up tourneys. So a lot of stuff is going on at the rec. We do have three rooms that we rent. We have the club room at the rec. We have the worth room at Water Works Pool, and then we have the cafeteria down at the community center. In twenty, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, we did, had sixty total rentals. Um, last year, we had a hundred and twenty-two, and then this year, we were down just a little bit with a hundred and ten. We're, um, making some improvements down at the community center cafeteria, and we're hoping to be able to flip that room and make it, uh, a whole lot easier for people to do presentations, have speakers, and not be at the, at the end of the ramp where people are walking down in the middle of your presentation or anything like that. And, uh, plus it allows us to have room to kind of tuck the tables and chairs away that nobody can see them. Our park shelters, we started out seventy-five. We bumped up to a hundred and twelve, and then we were down to ninety-three this year. We had a new policy this year that we had to put in place that you can only rent a, a shelter, a room, or anything if you're a Norwood resident. We're starting to have these, I don't, they're, they're, these pop-up kind of parties. I don't, we used to call them raves. I don't know what you call them anymore, these kids, but they were, uh, they would get out of hand really, really quick. And so we changed the policy, and that's why it brought us down a little bit, but we don't have the issues anymore with people messing up our shelters or anything like that. Some of the, uh, projects that we did in the past year, Lower Millcrest, we added a, a logo re, windscreen against the back fence. Uh, we had some, uh, new playground equipment set up, thanks, uh, to the Jim and the Highlands who, um, paid for a lot of that. It's got a zip line to it. It's a, it's a big hit down there. We really appreciate their help in getting that. Water Works Pool, we did, uh, decks. We doing, still doing concrete work. There's even more to do. Uh, upgraded our bathrooms. We added a barracuda windscreen on the, um, the east, uh, fence line. We upgraded our HVAC and a new roof. And then, uh, we added a few additional cameras in the parks. And then this coming year, we're looking at, uh, our focus is gonna be on youth programming and activities and try to get a few more of those. Not necessarily all sporting things. We wanna look at maybe arts or anything like that to draw kids that aren't necessarily into sports. We wanna be able to try to meet some of their needs and be able to find activities for them as well. We wanna add additional cameras. The cameras have been a big help. When we do have issues in the parks or in one of our buildings, we're able to go and look at these cameras and see who did it, when it happened, what was going on, and, uh, and hold those people accountable. So we wanna continue to, um, add those in the appropriate areas. The pool, we still need to do some more upgrading, like I said, on the pool deck of the concrete there, and we're adding a sun shade over our baby pool that, uh, will be installed for, for next season, which will be, um, really, uh, good for the babies and, and the moms that have to just kind of hang out in there. We added a rail, uh, for, um, the moms and dads and whoever needs it, to be able to step out of the pool. The baby pool is literally only a foot, but sometimes that foot is a big step, and it, you know, you're in a, in a pool that could be potentially slippery. For whatever reason, we've never had a rail, and so we actually added a rail so you can hold on the rail and step up or pull yourself up out of there, which is nice. We're doing some upgrades to Victory Park, um, and, um, really make a division between the activity part and our memorial part. And, uh, and then also upgrading, um, some tables and some chairs, bench kind of chairs, um, so people could do cards. They could do checkers, chess, any of those kind of things. Cornhole, uh, shuffleboard, and so that'll be exciting, uh, to see that. And then, uh, next year, looking at getting the elevator installed. That was probably the biggest question with all these people called in the last two days was are we handicap accessible? And right now, to get all the way down the pool, we are not. And so, uh, that, adding that elevator and, uh, making a means for people to be able to come in, especially our seniors, to get down to either workout or go to the pool will be huge. And, uh, those steps that we have are draining at times. And then looking at the outdoor area that used to be the formal, uh, outdoor pool there at the rec and, and see, uh, what we wanna do with that area. And then, uh, we wanna, uh, speaking with Emily and, uh, the Parks Committee, wanna look at trying to like focus on just a couple parks. We're still do some things in, in all the parks as we can, but have a stronger focus on like two parks, and then that way we can see more progress, and where our residents can see more progress on those. Our senior center, um, January twenty-four, we took over the senior, we didn't take it over. The administration put the, put, uh, the senior center underneath the recreation umbrella, and, uh, I've been real excited about that. It's something I was, I was looking forward to. And, uh, so in that building right now, we have a senior center. We have Trout Lily Montessori. The, uh, police have a substation in there. Our historical society has a room. Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts have rooms. And then we host a lot of community groups, you know, the Democratic Club, Republican Club, the Business Women, uh, Norwood Together, and then others that, uh, that just need a space to do a meeting that are community-based places. Hired April down there, um, and I'm gonna, you know, I, I'd have to crack the whip periodically. No, seriously, April is my full-time senior director down there. She's done a bang-up job and really, um, built that, that program down there. Uh, Maria Mikey is, uh, our part-timer down there and our cook. If you ever wanna stop down on Thursday, every Thursday at eleven-thirty, we have lunch, and Maria puts out some seriously good lunches. And, uh, we got, like, all my staff, whoever's working that day, they're always like, you know, hey, what's for lunch? That's because she does a great job. And she does a great job of helping April with, uh, whatever needs to be done down there. And then, Kevin, uh, is her, uh, her husband, who's, uh, retired from our public works. He, uh, is one of our bus drivers down there as well, that helps shuttle our people around. Twenty-twenty-five, we remodeled and opened a new fitness center. So we took a room that was kind of a storage room. We gutted it out. We repainted it. We put, uh, like this carpet squares down, and, uh, we put, uh, an elliptical in there, a treadmill in there. Uh, we added some, um, some small dumbbells and some stretch bands. And that's what qualified, uh, us to be able to use as silver sneakers, because we do take silver sneakers. And, uh, that's been a big hit. The seniors do use that. They feel more comfortable in there. There is a TV in there for them as well, but it's more comfortable for them instead of them coming to the rec and being around all the, you know, the bulky guys and all that. They feel a little bit more comfortable in their own little room, and, uh, they come, uh, April gives them challenges from time to time to see, you know, whoever, uh, comes and uses the fitness room the most will get a gift card or some things like that, and, uh, gives them a little bit more excitement. We updated the, uh, lighting and HVAC down there. Our current membership is at a hundred and forty-eight, which is up seventy-five, uh, with twenty-six of them being, uh, silver sneakers. And then, uh, our range down there goes from fifty-five to ninety-three. Our senior outreach, uh, April takes and she meets with anybody and everybody that she can talk to that might know a senior, that she can then talk to that senior and try to, you know, encourage them to come down and, and be a part. She makes home visits. She makes phone calls, emails. She does everything. If you're missing, if, if you miss two weeks, you're getting, uh, you're probably getting somebody knocking on your door. She checks on them. They're, we're to the point now that they're calling her if they're headed to the hospital. They're calling her before they're calling their family. Which is pretty cool. I mean, she has that kind of effect on our seniors that they love her that much, that they want her to know what's going on before their family. So, um, real proud of her in that respect. She continues to put out a, a monthly calendar, adds a senior, we've added a senior tab onto the city webpage, make it easier for them to go and find their, um, their calendar on the city page. Then we, uh, continue to meet with groups and unions and churches and anybody else that'll meet with us and talk to us and be willing to maybe sponsor a lunch or something like that. Programs and activities down there, we're averaging forty to forty-five for lunches each week, uh, and that just keeps kind of inching up. And, uh, it's exciting to go down there and, and have lunch with them and sit and talk, um, and they just wanna love on you. And, uh, they, they, they get me every time. So we have a big Thanksgiving and a Christmas lunch celebration that we do, and, uh, those, we, we try to pull out all the stops, and we have just, I mean, we put tablecloths down, and we just have really, really nice lunches on those two special days. We have yoga and tai chi, book club, game and card days, bingo. Bingo's a big hit, obviously, and with that demographic, they love it, and, uh, you don't mess with the bingo. And it, at twelve-thirty, bingo starts at twelve-thirty, and if it's twelve-thirty-one, they're like, April, let's go. So they're, they're ready. Uh, they've done over thirty, uh, field trips. So we'll do anything from, uh, just going to a restaurant, and they, they are given ideas now, hey, we should try this place. We should try that place. Uh, farmers markets. We've done, uh, bowling, museums. We went to the, uh, Underground Railroad this past Friday, and man, what an educational, uh, trip that was for everybody, and they really enjoyed it. We've done the festival lights, the zoo, shopping, we've gone movies. Uh, they do a little bit of everything. And then some of the future ones we wanna look at is adding a strength and balance class. We wanna do some line dancing. Anybody knows, uh, an instructor that does line dancing? Maybe one of you, uh, that would be willing to come down and do a class? to come down and do a class? I think our seniors would love this. Me and April, we're talking about this just this morning about, I think that that would be a big hit. We hear that it happens at a lot of other senior places. We don't want to be the only ones that don't have it. So if you know anybody, let us know. We want to do a senior Olympics, maybe a volleyball. We want to teach them to do CPR and use AEDs that are placed throughout the building. Nutrition classes, scrapbooking, crafts, historical classes, music therapy, maybe an in-house spa day, donuts with the, the police department. This Thursday, we have the fire department is sponsoring lunch. Now, when we tell them that the fire department is coming, they go crazy. She, she makes the announcements right before lunch starts, any announcements since she said last week, I just walked in, she said, next week, the firemen will be here for lunch. And they were hooping and hollering. It's crazy. So they love those firemen and it's, it's, it's really funny to watch. Clinton, I didn't get a chance to introduce Clinton. I have four, right? Is that how you say it? I never say it right. Close enough. Clinton is our new Director of Programming and he's been in for several months now. He's doing a, an outstanding job as well. There's a lot that goes on at the rec. And in that position, he's kind of the, the do everything that I need done that I can't get done or something like that. So Clinton, can you get me these numbers? Clinton, can you check on this? Clinton, are, are, how are we on this? Where are we at with this and that? So he, he does a great job making sure that all of our staff are, are going and making sure that everybody's doing a great job there. April, we've talked about April and just what a great job she does. And then my staff, I, I do this. I deal with you all, I deal with the administration, I do the paperwork, the budget, all those kinds of things. My staff, they're my worker bees. And ah, I don't want to get emotional, but I love my staff and they do a great job. We have a great morale and they work hard and they do anything that we ask and they're, they always come up with great ideas. So they'll come and say, Gabby, what do you think about, could we do this? And so we'll sit down and start brainstorming. Is it something we could do budgetarily? Is it, you know, what kind of things that we need? Does the times work? Does the dates work? Does locations work? How's it all go? You know, we, and then we go, you know, if we go with it, we go with it and we go hard. And so I really do got an outstanding staff. Darren Hackworth, our project manager is, I mean, we're, we're like his second home, I think. It's an old building and so we've had to do a lot of things in there, but he does a great job and, and helps us to get things accomplished down there. TA and Jerry with the IT, they, they do an outstanding job. Public Works is always willing to move something here, move something there, pick something up for us, take care of us in, in any way that we call, hey, can you guys hang this? Can you, you know, move this? And they take care of. And then the administration and, and council, you have afforded me the opportunity to have a dream job. You know, then I was sharing with some nursing students from Xavier today that stopped in was wanting to ask questions about a pro, some sort of a project that they're doing. And they were asking a lot of questions about Norwood and how the rec is involved in that. And I, you know, I told them, I tell everybody, this is a dream job that I get to do. I grew up doing rec programs and now I get to be the leader and that's pretty much a cool thing. So in the beginning, I said 250,000 touches. And what I mean by that is that's, that's what we touch in a year's time. Now that's not, not everybody that's playing a sport or an activity or league or an activity or anything like that, but that includes all the grandma and grandpas that come to one of our facilities, to one of our parks, all the other family members that come in, all the people that come from out of town to other leagues and stuff that come to our facilities. We are touching 250,000 plus people in a year's time. And that's because you guys give us that opportunity to do that. And so all the programming that we do, we continually try to find more and new stuff. But I think that that's a big key number is 250,000 plus that we are touching, that's huge. And for a, for a city the size of ours, 20,000 people, we're touching a lot of people and in a positive way, I must say at that. So with that, I'll close. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions?
Yes.
This is Bowling.
Not a question, but I will say, Gabby, I think that you should also be on this list of recognitions. I really want you to know that the rec has blossomed under your leadership. You are doing such an incredible job. Your care for our community is so evident and the work that you've done, I mean, the rec shines. It is like such a point of pride for me and the city. And I am just so grateful for all the work you do. And I'll tell you, obviously we all in Norwood, I hope that everyone in Norwood loves the rec and we all should. But I was volunteering at Swim Champs and one of the moms of a swimmer who is on the Barracudas was volunteering with me and I asked her where she lived in Norwood and she said, oh, we don't live anywhere near Norwood. And so there are people who are so proud of what we're doing that they're coming from other cities to participate and that's all because of you.
I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
These are my workers here. These, they're the ones that get it done, but thank you very much. I do greatly appreciate that.
Mr. Moore.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Gabbard, yes, to echo Ms. Bowling's comments, thank you for all the great work you do. You know, I think what really strikes me about, about you and April and Clinton is, is kind of this balance of like being really like strategic in your thinking about your programming, being like very quick to implement and try and tinker and kind of learn your way there. But then also incredibly personable too and relational. You know, I think those are just like an amazing trio of qualities that happen to be present in all three of you. And so just want to commend you on the, the great work that you're doing. I, I guess if you think about, and I'll, I'll aim sort of like young and old, if you will, what are the biggest challenges that you have with attracting and retaining young kids to engage with your programs? And what are the challenges you have with attracting and retaining older folks to engage with the, the senior center programs?
The senior center programs, it's a matter of, I think, getting the word out. You know, we, we do every means that we can and, and April tries to go to groups and organizations, but it's just a matter of, of getting them to come out. You know, she'll talk to people and they, they just don't, like I said, we, probably the, the majority of seniors that get a senior membership don't necessarily go down and take advantage of the senior. And we push that and we tell them they should go down and check it out. I think there's a pride thing there. People are like, ah, that's for the older folks kind of thing. And I'm only 65, you know, I'm only 70 and they're, you know, but I think, seriously, I think that there is that. So that's part of the challenge is just trying to, to get them to come. But once they come, they fall in love and we don't have a problem with retention. The only, the only way you leave is the bad way.
And just to, just to be clear on that, could you state the, the age range at which people are welcome to participate in the senior center program?
55.
So 55 and up?
55 and up, we consider, you know, you can be a part of the senior program. And our oldest right now, 93, is 93. We have a couple of 90s, right? Yeah. And they're the most feisty. They've lost their filters.
And then on the, the young side?
On the youth side, that's one of the focuses that we want to put this year is trying to increase youth activities. When I first took over, recreation as I, when I grew up was all about the youth. And so I kind of took that opposite side and I said, hey, I want us to make this for all ages, not just a concentration of just youth activities. So I don't want the rec, people to think recreation and just think youth. I want them to think everybody, the whole family, all ages. And so we're, we're going to be doing a, so we've, our concentration thus far has to get adults involved and get them going with the hopes that they're kids, then we can kind of start building on those. And so that's where our focus is going to be this year is trying to get some youth activities.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hoover.
A couple of questions, also would like to, to echo. I do miss you on council, but this fits you pretty well. I'm curious about what the membership goals, clearly it's been growing leaps and bounds. There's got to be a cap where that's too many people for the facility. Do you have any idea what that would be?
No, no, we're not going to set a cap. We'll pack them in. Really, they're, because we're open Monday through Friday, 6:00 AM till 9:00 PM. And so they'll be, when I open the doors every morning at 10 till 6, there's usually somebody already waiting in the parking lot. And so they're ready to go. And I'll have a good handful in just that first hour that you would think, but they come in, they work out and go home, get ready, go to work. And then, so then we stay busy all the way up until about noon. And then from like noon to about 3:00 is, is really our, our low time. It's not very busy at all. And then people start getting off work, kids are getting out of school and everything starts kicking in for the rest of the evening. So our hours and then on, on the weekends, Saturdays and Sundays, right now we're at nine to five. So we, we have plenty of hours to pack a lot of people in. And so right now, I, I don't really want to say that we have a max because we're, we're going to fit you in there.
So your, your sense is that you can just keep building and it'll become clear when and if that, if you hit that.
It's kind of a fluid thing because it's going to ebb and flow as far as numbers. You know, one year we might be, we sold a lot of memberships and next year not so many, but you know, people are coming and going and, and change for different reasons. We do have the cheapest rates out there than, than anybody else. And so anybody wants to, you know, check those out, I mean, we, we've got the place and we, and we have all the amenities that you need.
Another question was, I know this is the first year with the pool management.
Second.
Oh, second?
Yeah.
And it still feels like that is the best way.
Yeah, Noah and I talk a lot about that. The mayor's involved in it and we're going to be sitting down with all the numbers that I showed you and just kind of go through those. We'll kind of look at incidents and stuff like that that may have happened over this past year and we'll reevaluate that here before the end of the year.
Mrs. Fransel.
Yeah, thanks so much. I'm, I'm really excited to see the next year's budget. I agree that focusing on two parks and really showing like we are really investing into our park infrastructure, to me seems like a really great way to show the city. Like you don't notice the little stuff, that's still really important, but having some big showcase like, hey, we have invested in X park for a while and here's what we're doing, I think will be great. What, what's the forecast or plan for the outdoor area at the rec? When, when might that be redeveloped into something?
Well, talking with Noah, we were going to look at having a company come in and do one of the community engagement kind of conversations to where we can see what the community wants and really be able to not just put, you know, necessarily what we want in there, but what the people want and, but also what would be feasible and, you know, meet our budget, but meet our needs like that. But yeah, that's, we're, we're really open to everything right now. So if there's any big sponsors out there, you know, we could do a big bubble.
Sorry, I'm curious, you were talking about trying to reach out to seniors specifically. Do you have a sense of where most people find out about the rec or the senior center? Are you able to track? Is it that they saw it on the website, they heard about it from a friend? Do you have a sense where your referral sources are?
A lot of it is from them. They, they're, they're friends or they, they tell other family members, word of mouth. But we do put things on the, the city webpage. They're going to be putting together their own Facebook page here soon. And, and then once we kind of go through that process and it gets approved by the administration, then we'll launch that and that'll, that'll help them as well because they're, they are involved in social media. And so that'll help as well. But she goes out, she hits clubs, organizations, speaks to anybody and everybody and try to, to, you know, we put crackers down and try to any way we can to draw them in, yeah.
Mrs. Hoover.
Sorry, I believe this is my last. You mentioned the work in Victory Park. I'm curious, was there a professional landscape designer involved or any community input? You mentioned doing the community input with the former pool.
Yeah. That I, I don't know, I can't answer that. That, that was an administration decision and we go with it. And well, I mean, from what it looks like that we're doing is going to be awesome and it's going to really make that park, you know, more aesthetically pleasing, I think, and, and hopefully draw some people in there, not the wrong crowd, but draw families up there to do some activities and hopefully we can start pushing some of that bad crowd out.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Gabbard? All right, thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, our request to address council. There were several. There were some that were general requests. There were others pertaining to the veto statement. So those that noted the veto statement will be considered prior to that letter unless there are any of you who would prefer to speak earlier in the meeting. Otherwise, I will have your, your request to address council will take place prior to that letter being read and considered. So just some reminders on requests to address council. We do have the timer set for five minutes. We do ask that you state your name as well as your address. And I know I was lax with this tonight, but just a reminder that all requests to address council must be submitted no later than 10 minutes prior to the meeting. So just a reminder for future meetings. The first request to address council this evening is Naioka Cope.
Hi, my name is Naioka Cope. I live at 1751 Lincoln Avenue. And the reason I'm here is all the speeding on our street, since the street has been redone, is getting out of hand. One evening, three children almost got hit and the cars are going by so fast that my camera doesn't even get the car. I mean, this is really bad. And I've lived there for 34 years and we've always had speeding, but it's bad. And I don't want to wait till someone gets hurt or killed before something's done. I don't know if there need to be speed bumps since the schools are up there, those children are walking down the streets every day, two, three times a day. And if one of them gets hit by one of those cars, then what? I mean, we need to look at this like soon, like yesterday really, but it is really bad. I mean, I would even be willing to show somebody my camera to see how fast they're actually going. I mean, I didn't notice on, I think it's, is it Slane where they have those speeding machines up? I mean, maybe that might even help. I don't know, but I think it really needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. The next request to address council is Ramon Tweedy.
Good evening, council. My name Ramon Tweedy, I own Tweedy Burgers at 2750 Park Avenue. And I am, hard to say, I'm stressed, hurt, scared and need your help. I filed a police report on August 27th for theft going on in my stall and still haven't received anything yet. The people that committed the theft are still there intimidating. I hear them talking right next door to me and I'm scared, my son's scared. And I'm an investigator for a major corporation and I have never seen this in my life that when you get video footage and witness and nothing is being done. I, theft is my other job. That's what I do for a living. And I just can't believe like nothing is being done. And I have to see these people and drive around my own business to make sure it's safe for me to go in. And I'm asking for your help. I don't even know where else to turn to. I filed a report, I moved it up to the sheriff department, they told me to go to Helmand County Prosecutor. I don't even know if I need to go to Department of Justice, the FBI, I don't even know now. I mean, to the point, I'm so stressed that the people that are stealing from me is still right there every day, mean mugging me, talking, and I can't do nothing. me, talking, and I can't do nothing, just sit there and take it. So I'm asking for your help. Thank you.
Thank you. The next request to address council is Bishop Sunny James.
Good evening, uh, Bishop Sunny James, 4305 Ashland Avenue. Um, first and foremost, uh, today before I came, my 13-year-old daughter said, "Bishop, you make sure you tell the mayor I said hello." And so, "Mr. Mayor, hello," from Sunny Renee. I want to address, uh, an issue that was brought to my attention. I brought Dr. Rodney Howard Brown, Corey Bowman, and some other figures to Factory 52 to patronize Tweedy's business. This man has been to 98 countries, all over the world. I'll be going to DC with him July 1st through the 5th of this coming year. And they were really offended because on the day that their dear friend Charlie Kirk was assassinated, they were sitting there eating. And they walked around to just get some food, to hear people really being disrespectful and talking about their dear friend, who they just saw videos of him being assassinated. I'm still working with them because I want them to keep coming back to Factory 52, namely, I tell everyone, Tweedy's. But we really wanna make sure that we do a good job of respecting all people. And so I want to apologize to a lot of my peers, my peers being those residents, that on the last city council meeting, they may have felt like I turned on them and switched my position regarding POK and Factory 52. I wanna set the record straight. I have not, nor do I ever accept one dime from anybody. Many of you know that I'm starting my new for, uh, organization called The Called Into Action, where I'm intentionally going after multimillion-dollar donors, where I currently have acquired 16. The other day in my home, I paid some staff, and let me stand corrected, my 13-year-old daughter made payroll the first time. And as I allowed her to make payroll, I looked at my staff and I said, "What did you all notice?" And they said, "Whoa, we got paid." And I said, "Well, that's a good thing." I said, "But did you notice who did not get paid?" And that's me. I do not accept one dime for the work that I do. So to my neighbors and my peers, the reason that I changed my position is because I had seven very qualified attorneys look at some of the video footage of meetings and things like that, and they warned me and said, "Bishop, you gotta get to, to the city. Y'all about to get busted." This incident, if you guys aren't careful, this thing could become very, very expensive. And it wasn't this current city council's fault. And so I said, "Whoa." Knowing that Nick and I have worked together and can work together, I said, "Listen, let's reverse our vote so that the city doesn't get hit for millions of dollars, or the potential of it." And that's why I changed, because I believe if people work together, like, soon you'll hear my Come Together, um, tour, that I'm traveling the state, reaching all kinds of folks. I mean, just yesterday, I was with Congressman Greg Landsman and our local FBI in a private meeting, talking about the things and the issues in our city. Then last night, I was with Corey Bowman, Christopher Smithman, Kevin Farmer, and others, talking about what do we need to do. And as Alexa sees me in the courthouse, I'm trying to bring people together, folks, and I need your help to do so. And when you hear about the Come Together Tour, don't let it be folks from around the country coming in to support us. You come in and support. It's no longer about black versus white. It's no longer about red versus blue. It's about all of us coming together. And over my dead body, I give you my word, I'm not a sellout. I don't accept money for what I do. But we are the greatest community in this country. Let's get together, come together. God bless you.
Thank you. Moving on to the agenda, we have reports of standing committees of council. And this is a finance committee report from August 26, 2025. Mr. Gertner.
To the Honorable Council, City of Norwood, Ohio, we, the Committee of Finance, Budget, Audit, and Claims, to whom was referred, standing reports, claims, Norwood Community Television, beg leave to submit the following report. The Auditor's Office is working on updating the city's accounting software to the newest version and entering into a contract with Monday.com, a project management software. Applications for the open deputy auditor position have been vetted down to five candidates. An independent contractor will assist in continued work on the report on accounting methods. The tax department is currently working on projections for the next five years. There was also discussion about the 2026 budget, specifically encouraging members to request budgetary considerations if desired to the Safety Service Director. The committee discussed Norwood Community Television and its budget shortfall. NCT operates on income from cable franchise and subscription fees. This income is dwindling due to cable TV subscriptions and unable to sustain its current operations in the upcoming year. Respectfully submitted, Jeff Gertner, John Braden, Emily Franzen, and John Moore.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowling.
I move that we accept the committee report.
Motion by Mrs. Bowling to accept the committee report. Mrs. Hoover.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen? Yes.
Mrs. Hoover? Yes. Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertner?
Yes.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. We have no second or third readings of ordinances or resolutions. So we'll move on to introductory readings. The first is an ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2025 and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Franzen.
I move that we suspend the rules and have all three readings for this ordinance.
Motion by Mrs. Franzen to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance. Mrs. Hoover.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen? Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertner?
Yes.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have all three readings of the ordinance.
Orders to change appropriations for the year 2025 and declare an emergency. Orders to change appropriations for the year 2025 and declare an emergency. Orders to change appropriations for the year 2025 and declare an emergency.
Thank you. Mrs. Hoover.
I make a motion we pass the ordinance.
Motion by Mrs. Hoover to pass the ordinance. Ms. Royce.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Royce. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertner?
Yes.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance amending Part 7 Business Regulation Code of the Norwood Codified Ordinances to add new Chapter 773 Cryptocurrency ATM Warning Requirement. Ms. Royce.
Um, I move we have the first reading.
Motion by Ms. Royce to have the first reading. Mrs. Bowling.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bowling. Any discussion? Ms. Royce.
Um, if anyone's curious, this is to put warning signs by our current crypto ATMs. Um, it's just a sign that says, "Stop, call our police department first." I'm hoping that the police logo, in addition to a local phone number, might stop some people from sending money they shouldn't through these machines. Um, however, I won't hide the ball. Uh, most likely, I will be bringing an ordinance to possibly ban these before the end of the year. Um, someone recently reached out to me because they were scammed out of $10,000 at a crypto ATM within Norwood. Um, they're willing to come forward and talk about their experience, is my understanding. Um, but I really wish we would've had the signs up sooner for that. Um, they did express that maybe a sign with our local police logo on it and a phone number might have stopped them, um, because they were being told they were sending mu- sending money to a government agency, which our sign says, "Government agencies, as of now, do not accept cryptocurrency." Um, so I'm hoping, if we stop even one other person in the meantime, that'd be great. The only reason I wanna do one reading, um, is I think, if we do one tonight, um, I would like to amend this to actually add an emergency clause. I didn't think to do that previously, but that way it'll go into effect immediately. Um, and if we just do an amended version next meeting and do three readings, it'll go into effect faster than if we pass it with three tonight. So that's just, I guess, ordinance math. But, yeah, that's it for me.
All right. Thank you. And, Mr. Moore?
Yeah, I guess, um, I, so I received, um, a message from a resident about this, that that basically showed me the existing, like, user experience of, um, I don't remember precisely the business that this one was located in. And there were, they basically, you know, clicked the button, then took a picture of the screen, took a, clicked the button, took a picture of the next screen. And there was basically like five or six screens worth of warnings embedded in the machine. Um, but I guess I'm a little bit confused about sort of the, the necessity to go sort of above and beyond what is already kind of baked into the, you know, this, the, the product, um, uh, to do this. Cause I guess, like, you know, my, my other thought would be, um, you know, certainly there are other ways to send and receive money in the world besides these kind of machines. Um, you know, do we, uh, each of those have similar, um, signs, uh, that, that warn them of, you know, check with the local police department before you use Western Union or things like that?
Ms. Royce.
Um, happy to address those issues. Um, I, I've had a family member who was scammed with these. Um, by the time you are in front of the machine, someone has had you on the phone for hours and has you terrified. So they do just click through the warnings. I mean, I think everyone here has probably clicked on terms and agreements without reading them. I think it's a similar response. Um, and, and I mean, I've clicked through them as well. Those warnings don't say, like, they don't say, "Stop." They don't say, "Government agencies don't accept this." It basically just says, "You're sending money," is what I read. Um, the other thing is, I mean, they don't say, "Reach out to local law enforcement." They don't tell you to pause, which I think a local member would. Um, and actually, there are signs in Kroger by the gift cards telling you not to send gift cards to strangers. Um, and I would say the difference with cryptocurrency is you cannot get a refund, because it's not regulated. It's gone. The government doesn't really step in to get it back unless BCI decides they wanna help you. Um, so far, I've only heard of them helping a woman in Delhi who sent $35,000. Um, but they don't really help people who only send, that I've noticed. No disrespect to the BCI, but I understand why. They don't really help people who send like 25, $5,000. Um, and if you're a sophisticated consumer, I don't really see why you would need to do cash to crypto. You probably have a bank account, you probably have a laptop or phone. This is, I don't, this shouldn't prevent anyone who needs to trade in crypto from doing it, is what I would say.
Thank you. Mrs. Franzen.
Yeah, and I know this, this is one of so many scams that especially prey on people who are, uh, older or less familiar with technology. Um, and with that, and I agree, the, waiting till next time to do all the readings makes sense. Um, I would say something else that we might do is, uh, talk to April Maloney, since she's a senior center person. Make sure that she has maybe information for the seniors there, uh, since they are in the, in the cohort that is most likely to be scared into doing this. And it's really, it's really insidious how they do it. It's, they make it sound like you're going to go to jail, or like your grandchild is in danger. That's a really big one. And it's, it's horrible. So anything that we can do to, to increase awareness, if we can help one or two people not send their life savings to some scammer in Kenya, that would be great.
Mrs. Bowling.
Yeah, when we were discussing this in committee, which we took quite a few meetings to kind of go over the pros and cons, and like, is there a need, and how will it impact the business owners who have these ATMs, um, we did kind of a good amount of hands-on, onsite research of actually tapping through all the warnings. And, um, one of the things that kind of, at least influenced my decision to think that this would be for good, is the warnings at Kroger in the gift card section. On every single side that sells gift cards, there are like five signs that say, "Stop. No business is accepting gift cards as a form of payment. Do not use this as a way to purchase something on the internet from a person directly, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." And I think, especially because of the demographic that is often targeted in these types of scams, the more barriers we can have that give people pause, um, the better. And I mean, with the gift card scams, I, in a former lifetime, I was a banker, and I encountered quite a few of those. Um, we're talking much smaller potatoes compared to what, what people are losing in these Bitcoins. Um, and so I think, you know, the more opportunities we can have to tell someone to take a breath, take a moment, here are some reasons why this could not, um, be real for you to think about. And here is, yes, a 513 phone number that you can contact, that we will let you speak to a person who can answer some questions, um, the better. The, um, if anyone saw that movie Thelma that won all those awards last year, it's like about almost this exact thing.
It's amazing.
And it is a fantastic movie, but also sort of heartbreaking. Um, and, yeah, I think, I think it's a great idea. Emily, I love the idea of, of maybe having some kind of resources or even like a, a workshop available at the senior center to help folks as well, cause it, it is confusing, and they are convincing.
Ms. Royce.
I will point out, while a lot of the reported thefts are from senior citizens, the two people I know who have been scammed this way are not seniors. They're not. They are, and, um, in fact, when my relative got scammed, they spoke to their other friends, who were all under 30, and some of them had also been scammed and just never reported it because they felt like they were embarrassed, which there shouldn't be shame in it. This happens to smart people. This happens to young people, old people. So I'll also just say, if you've been scammed, feel free to report it. It's great to have the numbers. I mean, knowledge is power, and you shouldn't be embarrassed. Um, these scammers get you, they scare you, they say enough right things. Um, so if anyone else would like to come forward and talk with, talk with us about whether or not they would like these banned within our municipality, I would love that. We didn't have a lot of people come forward to encourage banning them. In fact, I only had business owners who wanted to keep them, and another resident who wanted to keep them because they used them. Um, but since this has been introduced, like I said, I've had a victim come forward. I've had some officials talk about how they would prefer that they just be banned. Um, so if, if you have any input, feel free to come to the next law and ordinance meeting, which I plan to schedule later.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. Motion on the floor by Ms. Royce, seconded by Mrs. Bowling, is to have the first reading of the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen? Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertner?
Yes.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have the first reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance amending Part 7 Business Regulation Code of the Norwood Codified Ordinances to add new Chapter 773 Cryptocurrency ATM Warning Requirement.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item, this is an ordinance authorizing the Norwood City Treasurer, on behalf of the City of Norwood, to file claims and collect unclaimed funds held by the Ohio Department of Commerce for various city departments at their various street addresses and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Franzen.
Uh, I move that we suspend the rules and have all three readings of this ordinance.
Motion by Mrs. Franzen to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance. Mrs. Hoover.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Mrs. Hoover.
I'm wondering if we could have, uh, would that be Mr. Powers? Or Mr.?
Wagers.
Mr. Wagers, I'm sorry, you were behind a head.
Mr. Wagers?
Uh, so this is, um, this is unclaimed funds that is, that's being held at the, the state of Ohio right now. It's actually, we're not getting rich off this. I think it's like $3,900 total. Um, I think it's like 40 different payments, and they vary across all city departments. So we have some for the police department, some for the mayor's court, some for the tax department, some for the rec department. So it's, it's kinda depending. There's, it looks like some of it might be some insurance stuff. Some of them are down to as low as like $4. So there's, there's probably 15 of them that are only like $4 apiece, which I believe are the copy fees for mayor's court. Um, but that's what that is. But I believe this ordinance may need to be amended a little bit, and James Bonzal's name needs to actually be on there. So not just assigning it to the city treasurer, but assigning it to him specifically. That is a request from the state to be able to, to have them release the funds back to us.
And that, just to clarify, that would have to be within the caption of the ordinance, because I did notice in Section 1 that both your name and Mr. Bonzal's are both included there. there.
I would need to check with James, but I, I don't want to hold the, hold the thing up if, if that will be acceptable. All right.
Mrs. Hoover?
A follow-up question. Is this similar to when we all got letters saying, "Check your unclaimed funds"?
Yeah, the city of Norwood got the same letter.
Okay. And I just want to share with folks at home, I encourage you to check. My 23-year-old had like a $400 check that we were able to get from a high school job. He didn't deposit checks. So I encourage folks to get that money while you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Franzen?
I just had a question as far as if we need to amend it, do we need to amend that motion to do that? Or is it actually okay within the text of the ordinance? I want to make sure that we pass it, we don't have to pass it again.
Mr. Moore, are you able to confirm whether or not we can amend that by motion? Or would we have to put forth a new one with Mr. Bonzal's name in the caption?
Thank you, Ms. Franzen. I think that if, from what Mr. Powers is saying, if we just, if council amends the caption to say, the Nor, in the first line, "The Norwood City Treasurer, James Bonzel, on behalf of the City of Norwood," I think that would probably cover it. It's in there. Like, it, as, as it was mentioned, it is both Mr. Wagers and Mr. Bonzal are mentioned in Section 1, which is the, to me, the important part. But what the Ohio Department of Commerce is going to do, who knows, right? With the paperwork they get. So that might not be a bad idea.
Maybe to eliminate the chance of rejection.
As amended at the end of the caption, right?
Correct. Yes. All right. Any further questions for Mr. Wagers? All right. Thank you. Mrs. Franzen, would you like to amend your motion to add after Norwood City Treasurer, James Bonzal by name?
Yes, I will amend my motion to say that we add James Bonzal after Norwood City Treasurer in the caption of this ordinance.
And Mrs. Hoover, you will amend your second. Thank you. Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have all three readings of the ordinance as amended.
An ordinance authorizing the Norwood City Treasurer, James Bonzel, on behalf of the City of Norwood, to file claims and collect unclaimed funds held by the Ohio Department of Commerce for various city departments at their various street addresses and declaring an emergency?
As amended.
As amended? An ordinance authorizing the Norwood City Treasurer, James Bonzel, on behalf of the City of Norwood, to file claims and collect unclaimed funds held by the Ohio Department of Commerce for various city departments at their various street addresses and declaring an emergency as amended. An ordinance authorizing the Norwood City Treasurer, James Bonzel, on behalf of the City of Norwood, to file claims and collect unclaimed funds held by the Ohio Department of Commerce for various city departments at their various street addresses and declaring an emergency as amended.
Thank you. Mrs. Franzen?
I move that we pass this ordinance.
Motion by Mrs. Franzen.
As amended. Pass this ordinance as amended.
We just did. We did that. Motion by Mrs. Franzen to pass the ordinance. Mr. Gerton?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Gerton. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to the next item. This is an ordinance authorizing an offer of employment for the position of evidence technician, auxiliary police officer within the Norwood Police Department and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Hoover?
I make a motion that we have the first reading.
Motion by Mrs. Hoover to have the first reading of the ordinance. Ms. Royce?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Royce. Any discussion? Mrs. Hoover?
I believe I saw Chief Sumner in the back. If you would like to come up and speak on this. I didn't see if this had, if you needed anything additional.
So as you know, when Lieutenant Rich retired in April, our, our property room's been pretty much obsolete since then. I mean, Carl, Lieutenant Carl Fair, he, he, he does all the work down there. It is a full-time job. We've been needing to fill the spot. Obviously, it's, it's kind of, I don't want to say it's our command center, but it's the most liable, liable place in our department that has to make sure that there's audits, there's procedures, there's, you know, we take a lot of evidence in. We take a lot of evidence to the coroner's lab, the crime lab, prosecutor's office. So we, we needed to fill the spot. We're going to fill it hopefully with Jeff Kilby, who is, he retired from us. He was hired back in 2002. He retired last year and he spent the majority of his time with us as one of our lead investigators. So he had access to our evidence room for over 15 years. So he knew, he knows the process back and forth.
Mrs. Hoover?
Just curious, how many auxiliary officers will that give us?
Well, that, that would be replacing Lieutenant Rich. So we currently have, we have one that left to seek other employment. We are currently in the process of hiring some part-timers. So we currently have two right now. One part-time, one full-time.
Thank you.
He will make three. And hopefully we can add four or five.
Mr. Gerton?
Chief Sumner, are you waiting on this ordinance to make the offer and to hire somebody?
Yes, I believe we have to because the salary is, the, the $25 an hour is more than what the salary, the 10% cutoff, so.
Mrs. Hoover?
Did you want an emergency? Did you want to suspend the rules? I didn't see a cover on this.
Yes.
Okay.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yeah, so it sounds like since it's been empty since April, it'd be good to get it done tonight if we can.
Yes.
So that makes sense to me. So I just want to make sure of that.
Sooner the better.
Yep. There's a bunch of stuff here and it's easy to miss or not know. So thank you.
Mrs. Hoover?
I would like to amend my motion that we suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Ms. Royce, you will?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So the motion on the floor currently is to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance. Is there any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have all three readings of the ordinance.
An ordinance authorizing an offer of employment for the position of evidence technician, auxiliary police officer within the Norwood Police Department and declaring an emergency. An ordinance authorizing an offer of employment for the position of evidence technician, auxiliary police officer within the Norwood Police Department and declaring an emergency. An ordinance authorizing an offer of employment for the position of evidence technician, auxiliary police officer within the Norwood Police Department and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mrs. Hoover?
I move we pass the ordinance.
Motion by Mrs. Hoover to pass the ordinance. Mrs. Bowlin?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bowlin. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to the next item. This is a resolution celebrating the month of September 15, 2025 to October 15, 2025 as Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Norwood, Ohio. Mrs. Hoover?
I make a motion that we have all three readings. We suspend rules and have all three readings with the first reading in full. My apology, Ms. Bowlin's.
Motion by Mrs. Hoover to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the resolution with the first in its entirety. Mrs. Bowlin?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bowlin. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have all three readings of the resolution with the first in its entirety.
Sorry, three times?
No, just once.
A resolution celebrating the month of September 15, 2025 to October 15, 2025 as Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Norwood, Ohio. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month, known as Mes de Herencia Hispania, is celebrated nationwide from September 15 through October 15 each year. The observance began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon B. Johnson and was expanded in 1988 by President Ronald Reagan to encompass the month during which it is celebrated today. Understanding that September 15 is significant, significant because it is the anniversary of independence for Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their Independence Day on September 16 and 18 respectfully. And whereas the City of Norwood looks forward to celebrating Mes de Herencia Hispania with the greater community to highlight the rich heritage, arts, histories, food, music, and traditions of all 26-plus Latin American nations. While recognizing that these nations are not homogeneous, this month celebrates honors and pays tribute to all of, all for their contributions to our city and our society. And whereas in 2025, the vest, oh my gosh, the vestiges of injustices and inequalities remain evident in the society of the United States. And whereas Latinos are individuals who are descendants of Latin American countries and may speak a variety of different languages and dialects. Hispanics are individuals who speak Spanish and are descendants of Spanish-speaking countries, including Spain. Latinx is a gender-neutral or non-binary term for people of Latin American descent and re-recognize the Latinx identity also encompasses people in Black, African, Asian, Indigenous, and queer communities. And whereas recognizing that Hispanics are the third most common ethnic group in the City of Norwood and understanding that Hispanics are business owners, entrepreneurs, homeowners, and renters, students, and neighbors. And whereas the City of Norwood is committed to recognizing Hispanic, Latino, and Latinx culture and heritage as an important part of the city and its strong inclusive community. And whereas contributions of Latin and Hispanic Americans from all walks of life throughout the history of the United States reflect the greatness of the United States. And whereas many Latin and Hispanic Americans lived, toiled, and died in obscurity, never achieving the recognition these people deserved, and yet paved the way for future generations to succeed. And whereas Latin and Hispanic Americans continue to serve the United States at the highest levels of business, government, and the military. And whereas the history of the United States is, is a story of people regularly affirming high ideals, striving to reach those ideals but often failing, and then struggling to come to terms with the disappointment of that failure before committing to try again. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Norwood, State of Ohio, that it, one, acknowledges that all people in the City of Norwood are the recipients of the wealth of history provided by Latin and Hispanic culture. And two, recognizes the importance of Hispanic Heritage Month as an opportunity to reflect on the complex history of the United States, including the City of Norwood, while remaining hopeful and confident about the path ahead. And three, acknowledges the significance of Hispanic Heritage Month as an important opportunity to commemorate the tremendous contributions of Latin and Hispanic Americans to the history of the United States, including the City of Norwood. And four, encourages the celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month to provide a continuing opportunity for all people in the City of Norwood to learn from the past and understand the experiences that have shaped the United States. Five, agrees that while the United States of America began as a divided country, the United States must, A, honor the contribution of all pioneers in the United States who have helped to ensure the legacy of the great United States, and move forward with purpose, united tirelessly as a nation indivisible with liberty and justice for all, and declare September 15, 2025 to October 15, 2025 to be Hispanic Heritage Month in Norwood to encourage our residents to learn about and celebrate Latin and Hispanic heritage. A resolution celebrating the month of September 15, 2025 to October 15, 2025 as Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Norwood, Ohio. A resolution celebrating the month of September 15, 2025 to October 15, 2025 as Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Norwood, Ohio.
Thank you. Mrs. Hoover?
I make a move, a motion that we pass the resolution.
Mrs. Franzen?
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Franzen. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
And that's it.
All members voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to the next items, these were the three ordinances that were, sorry, resolutions that were amended. The first is a resolution declaring the necessity to levy a tax in excess of the 10-mil limitation for general construction, reconstruction, resurfacing, and repair of streets, roads, and bridges in the City of Norwood, Ohio, and requesting the county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Franzen?
I move we have the first reading of this resolution.
Motion by Mrs. Franzen to have the first reading of the resolution. Mrs. Bowlin?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bowlin. Any discussion? Mr. Moore?
Yes, could we invite either Mr. Powers or another member of the administration just to narrate what this is about a little bit, just because this was a late addition to the, the agenda?
Eric Snyder?
Sure. This first one is a request to look into a street levy, correct? That's what we're discussing?
Correct.
So in my first term, there were many people that came up to me and said, "You, everything you talk about is streets. We've got to do streets. We've got to fix streets in the City of Norwood." And through the last few years, I, I've always said, "We can't do a street levy until we start performing, till the City of Norwood starts performing and putting new streets in place," which we have been doing and, and doing quite well at. Although Lincoln, I realize, has a problem now because it's a nice, smooth street and people are driving too fast. And we've had that same problem on some of the other streets. And I'm sure that Chief Sumner's listened to what you said. But one of the things that I, I said was, before we go to the residents and say, "Give us a little bit of money and we will bookmark that and we'll put that right here." We'll, we'll not bookmark the lockbox at, for streets and we'll do more residential streets. So we, we've got to perform and we have been performing. So this is put in front of council to take a look at it. This is not for you to, this is not for council to say, "Yes, we're going to, we're going to pass this levy and everybody is going to pay more taxes." to pass this levy and everybody is going to pay more taxes. This is a document that's required for it to be put on the ballot so that the citizens of the city of Norwood can look about it, look at it, and discuss it and say, are we moving in the right direction? And are we willing to put a little bit more money in the coffers to make sure that these residential streets, that haven't seen any work completed on them in years? I mean, I talk to people on a regular basis who say, I've lived here for 25 years and they've never done a thing on my street. And I don't disagree, there are streets in Norwood that, so that's what this legislation is about, is to potentially put it on the ballot. And, and I, it does not have to be passed tonight. This, I appreciate the first reading of it because it should go through the process. And I think the last time, the next one is the operating levy, and we'll talk a little bit about that. But the last time we did it, it was, these decisions were approved by city council in October, the second meeting in October. So that should be, we're not hard pressed for time or anything, we can do this in a slow, methodical, and discuss it as we move forward, so appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. And if, may-
Follow-up.
Yeah, so I guess just a follow-up to that. This is, this basically starts, let's say, the exploratory process and sort of the precise figures would be locked in later as we get additional data about total sums and millage and things like that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Franzen.
Thank you, and just a point of clarity to everyone, this proposal, this resolution, it's proposed to be on the May 2026 ballot. And the rule with these type of levies, as with any legislation, is that it has to be approved to be on the ballot by February, to give a sense of the timeline that we are looking at. So I appreciate the amount of time we have to consider this properly. I totally agree that a levy like this could be really useful for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Moore.
Just, just clarity for the people watching at home and for the members of council who have not been through the levy legislation process, for this and the ordinance that follows, say, we're going to ask the county auditor to do the math for us. So what we will get back on the street levy and on the renewal levy are, okay, if you're going to put a 1-mill street levy on, it's going to raise this much money and it's going to cost a homeowner this much per $100,000 value of their house. We get that report back, and it'll be the same for the renewal levy. The renewal will be different because it'll be based on the numbers as they were when it was first passed in the 80s. So the 1-mill from a street levy is going to raise, like, is, the amount from a renewal of the 8-mill will not be eight times what you get from the 1-mill. But that's the process, is it has to, council passes this, this stage, it goes to the county auditor, the county auditor sends us money back, and if council wants to, or sends us numbers back, and if council wants to put them on the ballot, one or both are on the ballot, then we pass another resolution, that goes to the board of elections. That second resolution has to be to the board of elections by whatever the date is in February, 90 days, I think, before, or whatever it is before the, so this is not, we pass this and we pass the other one in a week, it takes some time to get to the county auditor and back. So, you know, we're not right up against a deadline, but it does take time from this point forward.
Thank you. Mr. Moore.
Thank you. And to the auditor, I guess the question would be, like, I see sort of a term of five years expressed in here, is, you know, I would, I guess my question is, is that fixed? Or does it have to be five years? Or as you get these numbers, are you able to kind of do like the mortgage calculator and you sort of, you change the mills and you change the years and that kind of thing, and it gets you to a different lump sum? Or is it, is five years the only applicable term?
Mr. Moore.
Process-wise, I don't know off the top of my head. For a street levy, you don't have to have a particular term of years, and it can actually be relatively permanent. For an operating levy, for the other one, that is limited to five years, it can't be any more than five years. Now, I'd have to do some research, we got, if they come back and say, okay, a mill is going to raise this much and council decides, how about a half a mill, or how about two mills? We may need to recertify that to the county auditor to get numbers back, I couldn't tell you right off the top of my head.
Got it. So it sounds like the five years matters a lot more than the second one, but the five years may or may not be necessary here.
Mr. Moore.
Correct. Although if you're talking about, how much is it, do we, are we, is it going to take us, and how long is it going to take us to pay off what needs to be done for the streets? We're not even close on a 1-mill. Like, it will never, that's not enough. We need general fund money to really catch up on the streets. This is just a way to raise money that's specifically dedicated to streets that cannot be spent on parks, or buildings, or contracts, or anything else that is specifically for streets, it can't be touched for anything else, or, and bridges.
Got it. And perhaps, in the interest of public confidence, you might do it for a shorter term, sort of prove that, you know, the progress made was meaningful, and then go back.
Mr. Moore.
There's any number of ways that, in theory, you could put this in front of the voters.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Hoover.
I'm curious, and I'm not sure if this is for the mayor or Mr. Powers, if this street, street audit has been completed.
Mayor Snyder.
It has not been completed. It should be completed in December, we're hoping to have it all back. And that, that would be something that we'd use to base some of this decision-making on, yeah.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Gerton.
This is very interesting. I appreciate that this is before us. I also appreciate how much money you've dedicated in the budget to using general fund to advocate for our streets. I just think this is a good step forward, have our residents, ask them if they're willing to keep the process slow by doing general fund, or if we can speed up the process by a mill. So anyways, I'm very interested, and I think one reading to make sure that, you know, we get everybody on board with this is important.
Thank you. Mayor Snyder.
You looked at me when you said that, but really, it's council who holds the purse strings, and it's council who has said, we're going to move forward with these projects. Now, you know, the Safety Service Director and I and Public Works Director, we're bringing those things forward, and we've, we're pushing these together, but ultimately, it's council's decision when it comes to what we can do street-wise. And we've been pretty lucky to have councils that looked at it and said, with the matching funds and the programs we've got, let's move forward. So I just want to make sure it's clear that, you know, I can't take full credit for the street projects that we're doing, you know. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Mrs. Franzen, seconded by Mrs. Bowling, is to have the first reading of the resolution. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Royce.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gerton.
Yes.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have the first reading of the resolution.
Resolution declaring the necessity to levy a tax in excess of the 10-mill limitation for general construction, reconstruction, resurfacing, and repair of streets, roads, and bridges in the city of Norwood, and requesting the county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a resolution declaring the necessity to levy a renewal tax for current operating expenses in excess of the 10-mill limitation and requesting the county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Hoover.
Make a motion, we have the first reading.
Motion by Mrs. Hoover to have the first reading of the resolution. Mrs. Franzen.
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Franzen. Any discussion? Mrs. Franzen.
So this is the first go-around, I believe, for me on council with renewing this levy. I heard from Mr. Moore, I believe, that this has been a levy that's been renewed at various times since the 80s. What all has been raised by this levy and why do we still need it? Which is not meant to be a loaded question, it's just more to get the conversation going.
Mayor Snyder.
This is operating funds, it goes in the general fund every year. It's been there in years where we were hitting the lows and we could barely meet our payroll, but it's fully necessary. I think in previous years, it's brought in about $3 million of our, of our operating funds, so it's a considerable amount of funding. And this was the levy that was passed when General Motors moved out and we were heading towards a total, really, we were having real money problems at that time. And then it has, ever since, it has been renewed pretty readily by the community members because they recognize how important it is to our funding.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Mrs. Hoover, seconded by Mrs. Franzen, is to have the first reading of the resolution. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Royce.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gerton.
Yes.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have the first reading of the resolution.
Resolution declaring the necessity to levy a renewal tax for current operating expenses in excess of the 10-mill limitation and requesting the county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. All right, the next item is an ordinance amending 62-2024, which superseded ordinance 51-2024, which superseded ordinance 47-2024, which amended ordinance 18-2009, implementing sections 3735.65 through 3735.70 of the Ohio Revised Code to establish a community reinvestment area in the city of Norwood, to revise certain procedural requirements, and reflect changes in state law and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Hoover.
I make a motion, we have the first reading.
Motion by Mrs. Hoover to have the first reading of the ordinance. Mrs. Bowling.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bowling. Any discussion? Mrs. Hoover.
I did ask if we could just start fresh, so I apologize for the amendment and the, all the changes. One of the things that I feel like we've heard a lot from residents is about the residential versus commercial. So this is going back to five or more being considered commercial spaces. This is a thing that we've talked about numerous times, but wanted to actually get the legislation in front of us so we could see if we wanted to move forward with it.
Thank you. Mrs. Franzen.
Yeah, and, yeah, I was like, wow, there are a lot of super procedures here. I don't know at what point it becomes an entire page, but I appreciate you introducing this. It's something that I know we've talked to the school board about, and we've talked within committee about how, the best way that we can get people to invest and develop in Norwood, but still make sure that we don't give away too much money that could come to schools, that goes to the city. So it's always a balancing act. And I think, for me, I feel pretty comfortable with this kind of change so that people who have four or five units, they renovate them, they can still get a tax abatement without coming before council. But anything above that, yeah, it is usually commercial, and I think that the way we did it, while well-intended, did not encourage mixed-use development like I hoped that it would. So I'm glad that we're just doing the first reading tonight, but I think it is something I support in general.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Mrs. Hoover, seconded by Mrs. Bowling, is to have the first reading of the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Royce.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gerton.
Yes.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have the first reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance amending 62-2024, which superseded ordinance 51-2024, which superseded ordinance 47-2024, which amended ordinance 18-2009, implementing sections 3735, period 65 through 3735, period 70, of the Ohio Revised Code to establish a community reinvestment area in the city of Norwood, to revise certain procedural requirements and reflect changes in state law and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Moving on to administration reports. Mayor Snyder.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to start out by talking about the recreation report, and what a positive way to start the meeting. You know, Gabby is so enthusiastic about recreation, and then he's got April Maloney working with him at the senior center, doing such a great job, bang-up jobs, you know, stepping in from a person who'd been doing that for years and years, and then just reinvigorating it, bringing people, and then looking at the numbers, I almost wanted to applaud, you know, when he threw some of those numbers up, when you talk about the increases in that recreation department. And, and I can remember just a few years ago, when that recreation, when YWCA or YMCA was closing down, and James Bonzel and Mike Gabber came to me and said, hey, Mr. Mayor, we think we could maybe work a deal and buy that. And I was like, we're in a fiscal emergency, we don't have any money, how are we going to buy, and then what are we going to do with a recreation building like that? And then they continued on, and, you know, they brought that to the table for $1, you know, and what we, we've had to put money into it, granted, but you look at it, and it's, it could be a total drain on the city, or it could be just a gem, and they've made it into a gem, and we are, it's another one of the great things that happens in the city of Norwood, when you have people with, with big ideas, with big dreams, and they're willing to push forward with those big ideas and big dreams, and, and they've done a great job with that. I'd like to talk a little bit about development. Today, we received a letter, the Quality Insight is still moving forward, that development is going on, that's going to be 178, 178 units in there of 55 up, senior living. So that's coming to Norwood. And I know you look at that, you look at that project, I look at it, and when they tore down Quality, and when they had the wrecking ball there and they tore it down, and then it seems like it's just sitting there idle. It's not sitting there idle, there's so much going on. They're working on the finance, they're working on all the plans, they're developing everything that goes on. There are people working every day, and there are people working within the city that are talking to the groups that are, that are involved in it, saying, well, how are you going to make those things happen? So there's a lot going on with that Quality Insight. That letter, the letter will come to you guys sometime this week, I'll send that out to you, just to share that information. There's some interest in the Zombiel lot. So if you think about the Zombiel lot, that's right there at the end of Harris, right, you know, at the train tracks and all that, if you look at that building when it was tore down, you know, it's a complicated site because there is the old Cincinnati Streetcar subway line, the tunnel that used to go under there, and there's an easement going across, and then the city of Norwood, of course, has an easement going across there because we had Harris Avenue that ran across there, and then you still have some easements with Duke Energy with, because they've had their power lines and every, the transmission station there. So it's an interest, but it's a great location, not a better location for visibility and getting things going there, so that's, but there are, there are forks in the fire even with the Zombiel lot, so I better check these off as I go down because there's a lot going on here. The Allison Avenue Development, we just heard that they just received a huge amount of grant funding for that project to start moving forward. And you might recall that the Safety Service Director and I have talked about, you know, and probably Clint Zimmerman, the superintendent, has talked about, you know, what waterline, the waterline that needs to go back and service that, and the fire departments, that we really, you know, a bigger waterline going back there to service that area. So they made the connection on Montgomery Road that'll go back, that's Weir Avenue, it'll go back right by the library, but they made that connection now before we start getting that paving done. That is, that is moving forward, although it seems like it's taking forever. It's not taking forever, there is a lot going on. I know that the Ventura Group is working hard on that Allison Avenue Development stuff, they're, you know, these funding things don't happen just overnight, anybody will tell you that it's a constant challenge. I don't know how many of you have been past the Trail House Apartments that are being built right there on Wausen, I mean, they're going up quickly, so that is, I think of it as very rapid, because I drive through there on a regular basis, but that, those will be renting in the spring of 2026, and that's a big, and we've talked a lot about what we can do with Lexington Avenue right there, and we're sort of in negotiations and talking to different people about how we can get that street in better shape, and I don't know if any of you have been down Lexington, but Lexington wasn't a priority because it was, you know, and again, we go back to what was on the other side, there were train tracks on the other side of Lexington, and then there were homes on, on one side, and it, so it dropped down some on the order of streets being repaved because we had other projects, like Lincoln, like others, that really needed to be resurfaced, and so, but Lexington's going to be more of a priority now, but Trail House Apartments is going to be pretty big, and that, that's taken a while. The, let's see, one more development, I think, well, we are, we are still, and I've talked to council multiple times about the train tracks, about the abandoned train tracks that run across from Xavier over to Millcrest, and even beyond that, and we're still working and trying to work that deal and figure out how we can, how that will all come together so that that is additional, it's additional parkland in the city of Norwood, but it's connecting to the Wausen Way Bike Trail and connecting basically east Norwood to, you know, that, the whole St. Elizabeth's, I don't, what's, Bertie's, not Bertie's, what's the coffee shop there?
Good Life.
Yeah, the cafe that's on the corner there, so just connecting all that stuff across there. So there's, there's a lot of work going on there. So then, talking about some of the projects that are going on, you've got the Montgomery Road project with the pedestrian improvements, right, and everybody's seen the curbs and how they're bumping things out, so we're going to see, I'm sure the people who are tree lovers know that we're going to be doing some landscape work all down through there and trying to get things in shape and looking great. The decorative lights that are up there right now will be taken down, the decorative streetlights, there's just a row along this A block of City Hall, but they'll be taken down and stored away and potentially used in some other areas we, as we move forward because they're, they're not as, they're not as historic, I mean, they're not that old, but they're, they're lights that we'd like to hold on to. So, and the paving of Montgomery Road has started, I think, Noah, you said that it would start Monday up on the north end? Probably tonight, maybe the rain, but they will be doing that work in the evening, not in the evening, overnight hours. So the pavers will be out there, and I guess, you know, all I could say is be careful as you're working through those areas, or avoid it. If you've seen some of the other paving projects, they, once they get started, man, they go. I mean, it's like every night we'll see huge, what I consider a huge amount of progress, but that is, that is corkscrew to corkscrew, so they're starting on the north end and they'll end up on the other end, but there's, there's still some different challenges involved with that, but that project continues to move forward. I'd heard that the Sidery Group is looking for offers, if you know of anybody that wants to buy the Sidery Group, it's a great operation, but that's something that's still out there. For some of the city projects, the exterior of City Hall has been painted, I don't know, some of you might have gotten those emails, and then public works entry doors and garage doors have been replaced. And then Victory Park, the concrete pads, and I know that, Susan, that was a question, Mrs. Hoover, you brought up a question on what's going on at Victory Park. In the past, at Victory Park, we had two shuffleboard courts that were in place, and we're refurbishing those shuffleboard courts, so they can actually be used as court hall courts also, but we're refurbishing those. And then also in the past, there was a, an area where you could play checkers or chess, and they had large chests, it was a large concrete area that became just unserviceable. So we've put in a concrete area there, a couple of concrete areas, and we are putting in a couple of gaming tables. So the gaming tables would be for checkers or chess or dominoes, those type of tables that people can sit at and enjoy some gaming at those spots. So hopefully bringing some more people into the area. And then we have a small landscape berm that's being put in to sort of differentiate a portion of the, the back portion and the front portion. And really the part where I would say most people recognize that, you know, Victory Park has a memorial area that should be treated as such, and hopefully, you know, children aren't trying to play kickball in the memorial area. So it's, it's sort of differentiating some of the, some of the playground or park area and what's, should be a little bit more of a quiet and respectful area. So those are things going on. I looked at the, the last thing I had, no, the second last thing I had on here was the CRAs. And it's, it's interesting as you read this. One of the first things on CRA, among the factors that the city of Norwood may consider in reviewing exemptions should, could be brownfield cleanup. And as I look at every one of these projects, and I drove up into Westchester, and there was a, a huge combine going down the road, and I'm like, what, this thing's right? And sure enough, right down there, they have, you know, a couple of huge fields with beans in them and stuff. And you think, that's not brownfield, that's greenfield, this is Westchester, and it's all developing out. Norwood doesn't have anything, you know? Even, even the project that's going on on Sherman used to be, which was the Fun Factory, which was also the Bread Store, which was something before that, and something before that, that's all considered brownfield, they're still, they're still cleanup. So brownfield is one thing that you use a CRA for. Excellence in Architecture Materials and Construction, which we, we hold, we definitely ask our developers that come to the city, you know, what, what are they using? What are the, what are the materials that they're using? Try, we try to get a top-notch, really quality product out of these guys. Quality of landscaping and inclusion of usable green space. Quality of public spaces created by the project, elimination of blight or public nuisances, and job creation and retention. Those are the things that, the six items that are listed here, maybe there's more on the second page, but, well, there are. There's 13 of them total. Positive impact on the surrounding neighborhood provision, impact to city services, provision of office space. So there's, there's quite a few things that these can be used for, but the number one is brownfield cleanup and just about all of them. I did bring some pictures, and these are pictures that were taken out. I don't know, maybe some of you, some members of council might have seen, these are recognized them, but one of the things, when I came into office, that was sitting there, really looking terrible, was the playing card plant. And there was a huge push by the community to get something done with the playing card plant. And this is only a few years ago, when you guys say, you know, it seems like it was, it was forever that that playing card plant was sitting there. But I had, my sister-in-law worked at the playing card plant, and then when it closed down, it sat there vacant and falling apart for years, and was an absolute eyesore in the community. But I think it's interesting to look at some of these. The Zombio Building wasn't really terrible-looking, but it was just a big brick building. It was, it was nothing attractive to it. The, you know, all of these areas, the Trail House, the stuff there by the train tracks, you know, by Wausau Way, that wasn't a real attractive area. So we've made a lot of improvements in the city and getting things cleaned up and looking better and getting people in here. We're, again, they're talking, you know, I'm listening to the radio, and they're talking about housing shortage. The housing shortage, and we're building as much as we can, and we're trying to put housing in for, for people. So I think it's, I think it's important that we continue down the path that we're going to make sure that we're, we're moving forward. And then the last thing I wanted to mention, and maybe I'm stealing somebody's thunder, thunder, is the Gem of the Highlands. Somebody mentioned the Gem of the Highlands, putting in, they gave money for, maybe, Ms. Franzen, you know what that, they were talking about the money for the zip line.
Yes, the zip line and the new playground equipment at Lower Millcrest, swings, slide, and zip line, yes.
And the Gem of the Highlands is just a road race. It's just a, right, big event, road races. And it, but it's such a great thing to have in our community, and look, look at the benefits of it, and it's coming up. So I know a couple of people that are already training for it. I'm not, I don't train for it, I'm just, you know, sort of walking. But, but the Gem of the Highlands is coming up, so please do continue to support these local events that put so much back, they bring so much back into our community. So with that, I will yield, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mayor Snyder? Mrs. Bowling?
Well, that's a question, more of a comment, which I was going to talk about in unfinished business, but thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you also hate running, but you want to support the mission of the Gem of the Highlands, you can do what I do and sign up to volunteer. I'm not going to run, so I joined the planning committee. So you could do the same. Come support the mission. You don't even have to run.
I don't hate to run.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mayor Snyder? All right, Mr. Miracle?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to report out this evening that we are, after several months of working on our retention schedule, we have hired Joanne Hackworth to work a couple of days a week. She's done an outstanding job of going through the many boxes that we have. I think she told me last week that we have 27. And probably after she gets done this week, we'll have quite a few more, but that's, this is required by Ohio Revised Code. So we will be getting those boxes out of here this week, and I think we're probably pushing 30 boxes out this week. So she's done a fantastic job with that, so thank you to Joanne. Also, for several months, we've been talking about the P Card and the P Card Manual. My intention is to have that manual to council on the 14th of October, so that we can move forward with that. Also, we have signed a contract with Monday.com, our project management tool that we'll be using. The first project that we are going to implement in there is the report on accounting methods. So that is something that we're pushing pretty hard. Hopefully, we'll have some update on that at the next meeting by the 14th, and we can have that implemented. And then council will have the opportunity to have viewing, viewing rights to that. So that's, that's exciting as well. And then over the weekend, I'd like, we had a software update, so I'd like to thank TA and the Norcom team. They ran that over the weekend. I think we had to do an update on our SQL server as well. So that was necessary for us to do that, to stay current with our VIP SSI system that we have. And we can move forward with our VIP analytics now. So that's a big hurdle out of the way. So that's all I have for you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Miracle? Mr. Moore?
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Miracle. I guess if I may just offer more of a comment for the group. We talked about this a little bit in our Finance Committee, which preceded this meeting. Just with respect for the budget process and the format, and one of the things that FRP calls out is honor before November 1st of each year, the Finance Committee, city auditor, and mayor shall submit to city council fund appropriations at the personal services and other object level by departments for all funds. And so November 1st is, you know, certainly that's, that's not, you know, the final final, but just, I think, with regard to the spirit of the FRP and sort of the process outlined, we were kind of looking at each other thinking, wow, you know, November 1st will be here before we know it. So just wanted to say that, so that the broader group could hear that. And I know Mr. Powers, Safety Service Director, has started in on the budget process and whatnot, but November 1st will be here before we know it. And I know we added an additional Finance Committee meeting in order to try to facilitate that process. So just wanted to layer that on top of Mr. Miracle's remarks.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Miracle? All right, Mr. Moore? Any questions for Mr. Moore? All right. Then we will move on to unfinished business. Any unfinished business? Mrs. Hoover?
I just want to give a quick update on the community survey. We are still getting respondents, so I appreciate that. We're working on, over the weekend, I mean, it was Friday, I forget already, Mr. Gears created a new QR code for Xavier students. I went to an event and was chatting with some students and want to try to capture some of our student residents and get some of their feedback on their experiences in Norwood. So we're doing that. We're also going to do another outreach to the schools, and we're still working on community businesses. So it's still happening, world's slowest survey, but that's what you get when you have a bunch of part-timers. I believe that's all I have for unfinished business, thank you.
All right. Any other unfinished business? Any new business? Ms. Royce?
I'd like to schedule a lawn ordinance meeting. I'm looking into, we were, I was speaking to our resident who wants to come forward to talk about their experience with the crypto ATMs. They're actually having a child in the next two weeks, so I suggested late October for the meeting. Or later in October, I guess I should say. We could do, how's like October 16th, maybe, looking for people? I know that's a Thursday. Thursdays are bad.
Is that the meet the candidates night?
Oh, okay. I don't have to worry about that this year, so sorry.
Mrs. Bowling, isn't Monday's the best day for you?
Would a Monday be better?
Mondays are ideal, that will switch starting like November 1st. So if we do it after then, I have more flexibility, but I have, we are out of my peak season at work, so I can be a little more flexible.
Would October 20th work for everybody? Time? Oh, you, 6:30 work? Six? When does everyone?
Either works for me.
Okay, we can do six. Six, if that works for everybody. I like to get in a little earlier.
Mrs. Hoover?
I want to schedule a housing committee. I know Mr. Braden's not here, but other folks, we just have a couple of things, and I believe you had something you wanted to put in there?
I do have something I would like to report out to committee, yes.
Okay. Is that a meeting you'd like to be present for?
I would love to be present for it.
Okay. So what about Monday, October the 6th? Sorry, not you. Not you.
Me.
You. Does that work?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. 6 o'clock, the 6th at 6?
6 at 6. And those agenda items can continue to be added later.
Until I put out the agenda, yeah. And I can wait for a week or so if you'd like. Well, a week.
I will send you info about what I would like to discuss.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right, any other new business? All right. Moving on to communications. The first is a letter from Mayor Snyder regarding August mayor's court fines. Mrs. Franzen? Motion by Mrs. Franzen to receive and file the communication as if read. Mrs. Bowling?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bowling. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Next item, we do have four requests to address council, and that is pertaining to the veto statement from Mayor Snyder. The first request to address council is Tony Boyle.
Good evening, my name's Tony Boyle. I'm the current homeowner at 2739 Robertson Avenue. My statements today pertain to council's hopeful plan to call a special meeting to override the mayor's veto regarding PLK's Robertson South PUD. Currently, if no further action is taken, the preliminary PUD would pass, yet every single council member voted against it. If a special meeting is not called, I'm curious as to why council changed their decision, and that explanation is owed to the residents of Norwood. I first want to point out on 9-9, council voted 4-3 to deny the motion to include 2741 Robertson Avenue into PLK's Phase 3 PUD submission at Beech and Robertson. Furthermore, council also unanimously voted 7 to 0 to deny PLK's Phase 3 PUD submission, yet the mayor decided unilaterally to disregard the advice of his entire council and veto their vote. So to be clear, 2741 by law is not included in the Phase 3 PUD, per the denied motion from the 9-9 council meeting. So what does this mean? The current PUD submission does not accurately reflect the perimeter of the proposed development. It also means that the PUD submission does not accurately reflect the land use of the, of the proposed development. But most importantly, without 2741 included in the PUD, which was already denied, and the mayor's veto window has closed, the development now has no egress or no exit. I will repeat that again as it's extremely important. The Robertson South Phase 3 PUD without 2741 included has no egress and no exit. Again, council voted to not allow this property in the larger PUD, which makes this PUD illegal and a major safety concern. All roads within this development are one-way. There is no exit for homeowners, there is no exit for safety vehicles, and there is no turnaround. This is an extreme violation of Ohio and Norwood Fire Code. It places the safety of Norwood residents on the back burner. God forbid there's a fire. What happens when the fire trucks can't turn around, or re-enter, or exit? What do the estimated 100 cars, how do they get out of the development when all the roads are one-way? There's no turnaround, and there's no exit. Not to mention, as I brought up at my last meeting, per codified ordinance 1155, the current PUD submission violates at least 10 violations. Some of the most glaring ones to me, as the mayor briefly mentioned, open green space. A residential PUD requires 25% green space. It specifically states it must be physically suited to be readily accessible, available, and useful. A bunch of trees on a steep slope located at the end of a development is no way constitute usable green space and fails to meet these requirements. Additionally, this PUD does not provide reasonable privacy to existing users adjacent. While I understand this is a preliminary PUD, residents have every right to be concerned. Let's look at the history of PLK development. The city of Norwood is currently in violation of Phase 1 approval. It has not made the required improvements to the identified intersections, nor has PLK or the city provided an updated traffic study upon the completion of Phase 1. City of Norwood and PLK are currently in violation of Phase 2 approval. The city issued building permits before PLK submitted an official traffic study, or, I'm sorry, an updated traffic study. In fact, PLK still has yet to submit an updated or accurate traffic study as of 11/6, which council is aware of and still allows building to proceed. The city of Norwood is currently being sued by the school board regarding PLK's illegal tax abatements. Not to mention, legal notice was not provided for a majority of these meetings, and they included a zoning change. Yet, Mr. Mayor wants to pass another development, a development with no egress and no exit. So when the building and law department say safety concerns will be addressed prior to proceeding, history has shown this is false. So I ask council to please be responsible and call a meeting to override the mayor's veto. Council voted 7-0 to deny it less than two weeks ago. This is an extreme safety concern, and the fire department has also already confirmed that these design plans without 2741 in the PUD do not meet code, it would not be signed off. Allowing this PUD to pass is incompetent and a complete disregard for legal requirements in the codified ordinances. It will make the city liable for future lawsuits by residents. Passing this PUD would confirm that the city of Norwood places PLK's interests above Norwood residents and the many safety concerns we have voiced over the past several months. The same residents who have elected you and entrusted you to protect us. I'm asking council to please abide by the rules, regulations, and ordinances of both the city of Norwood and the state of Ohio, thereby calling a special meeting to override the mayor's egregious veto. Thank you.
Thank you. The next request to address council is Diane Farrell.
My name's Diane Farrell, I live at 2749 Robertson Avenue. I would ask also that you call a special meeting and override the mayor's veto. That the development back there is too big, it makes the area overdense. It does not meet the fire code, and that's a really serious concern, not only for me. I would hate to have a situation where someone had a fire back there and equipment couldn't get back there. I don't want to see someone perish back there in a fire. And it also puts our own firefighters in chief in danger if there's not adequate space to get back there and do what they need to do. The other thing is, I don't want to see our block just plow through for the convenience of a driveway for them. It's just not right, there's a home immediately adjacent next to that. It's just very unfair to totally disregard what the totally disregard what the residents want. As Tony said, all council members voted unanimously to say no to this development back there. Nothing's changed. Nothing's changed. It's only been a matter of days. Nothing's changed. I felt like it was a difficult vote for some of you, but you did vote no. And I ask you to stand behind your vote. I think you thought it through, and it was, you had the courage of, the courage of your conviction to vote the way you did. I ask you to stand behind that and not let your voice be silenced, and in the process, not silence our votes of our community members. Thank you.
Thank you. The next request to address council is Teri Meeger.
Teri Meeger, 4335 Beach. Just want to thank you for your support in regards to Robertson South. And just wanted to let you know that there's just been a disregard from PLK to its residents for safety. Parking spaces inadequate for that location. Again, the fire regulations are not being met. They will not sign off on it. This has been told to Tony today. And the privacy and density, they're basically building a fortress back there. And like Diane alluded to, if there's a fire, how are you going to get out? So that is a major, major concern. It's just way too big. I would love to see different plans made, less, less density, more parking, because that parking's going to flow onto Beach. There's only, what, 17, if that, parking spots besides their garages. I ask you all, if you haven't walked the property of South Robertson, to go back there and see it. Go back in that lot, look around, and see what's back there now. And you'd be amazed at looking at it, how is this all going to fit? How are they going to make this work? It's only 2.83 acres, and they're putting a couple of 48 townhomes in there. Sit on the Angelo's parking, our picnic tables, and look at the traffic that goes back. Look how quiet it is. I mean, they got rid of the blighted playing cards and the recently vacated printing company. That's fine. I'm, I'm all for that. That's good. But don't come into our backyards and make this fortress. It's not good character for us. It's, it's just the weaving of the cars back and forth on Beach is crazy. Just sit there and watch that. I just ask you to watch, go there, sit and look at what's there, and appreciate it, and then think about what it's going to be like once they start building. There's dog walkers, runners, kids in strollers. There's, there's people walking by. Ask them what they think about it. Talk to your neighbor, talk to the neighborhood around there. See what, if they know what's going on. No doubt, you've heard from us repeatedly, but could invest some time in getting to know the neighbors and residents' perspectives and suggestions. We take pride in our homes, we love our block, we want to preserve the serenity that will be destroyed with this very dense property. We are an area, we are, we are not an area of overgrown yards, gutters falling off our houses, cars that don't move. And we are an area of hardworking citizens that can appreciate the developments that have replaced at these buildings, but not behind our homes. Please put yourself in our front yard and know that it's just too big, as it is planned. When you walk the land, you will not believe how beautiful it is, and it's just going to be gone. It's going to change lives. We've dealt with the demolition of Factory 52, the early morning noise and vibration, and the constant layer of dirt on our porches, houses, and cars, and the parade of dump trucks, including the narrow, no street, no truck streets of Beach and Melrose. And it's just a parade of traffic. Now it's going to repeat again with multicolor. Progress is inevitable, but it doesn't have to be evasive. The proximity of this, this development is going to be like five to 10 feet away from houses, backyards, kids are playing. And probably, you know, these houses don't have fences, so people might be going into the yards. It's just, it's just not right. It's just too big. And I am all for them going back to the drawing board and making it a little smaller project. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the actual letter, so this is a veto statement from Mayor Schneider.
Mr. Gerson?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I think you said there were four. Was there a?
I'm, oh, there is still one right here. I'm sorry. James Lynch. I believe he left chief summoner, I think he was talking with you earlier.
Yeah, he just complained about speeding on Robertson.
Okay. All right. So now it is the actual consideration of the letter.
Veto statement, Mayor Victor Schneider, State of Norwood. Pursuant to the authority addressed by the officer of the mayor, I hereby veto the ordinance denying approval of the preliminary plan of unit development passed with all due readings at one council meeting by city council on the 9th of September 2025. The ordinance seeks to restrict or hold a development project within the city of Norwood that has wholly satisfied all established criteria and requirements adopted by our municipality. While I respect the intentions behind this legislation, I cannot approve a measure that undermines the integrity of our own development standards, exposes the city to unnecessary legal and financial risk, and creates uncertainty for both residents and businesses. Our community has worked diligently to establish a clear and comprehensive framework for responsible development. Developers who meet these requirements have a legal right and a reasonable expectation to proceed. However, truly stop or alter projects after compliance has been demonstrated would erode trust in the city's processes, discourage future investment, and potentially subject the taxpayers to costly litigation. For those reasons, I must veto the ordinance. I remain committed to supporting thoughtful growth that aligns with our community's vision and standards while ensuring fairness, consistency, and accountability in the administration of our laws. Respectfully, Victor Schneider, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Thank you. Mr. Gerton?
I'd like to make a comment on that. When is the appropriate time to do?
After we have a motion to receive and file.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hoover?
I make a motion we receive and file the letter.
Mrs. Bowling?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bowling. Any discussion? Mr. Moore?
Correct me if this is not the right time, but through the chair to the law department. I guess my question is, like, where precisely does this leave us procedurally with this veto? And with consideration to the 60-day period to act on the planning commission recommendation?
Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's an interesting situation. Council has 60 days to act. The only way council can act, I think, is through ordinance or resolution. And anytime council passes an ordinance or resolution, the mayor has the authority to veto it if he doesn't agree with it. And then council has 10 days, has to wait at least 10 days after the veto to reconsider it. And by a vote of five of the seven members, two-thirds can override the veto. I had this conversation with PLK's attorney this morning, who said, well, it's past the 60 days. Don't you think, you know, the veto kind of, I can't believe that it would, that, that any court would say, okay, council has to, has to review it, but then the mayor can, a member of the planning commission can unilaterally undo whatever the council does because of the time limit. So my interpretation is, this, as it stands right now, the plan is conditionally approved unless council overrides the veto. If council overrides the veto, then the plan will be rejected and then will end up in court. Because that's everything I'm hearing. So 10 days, I think it was Monday?
15th.
15th, so the 25th would be the first day, 26th would be the first Thursday, is the way I did the cat and the math when I was at home. I think that Thursday would be the first possible time that council could consider it.
Mr. Gerton?
I apologize, I have a long statement I want to read. I do have copies that you guys could have, council can have in a moment, but I wanted to have your attention for a few minutes. So it is my intent to seek to override the mayor's veto of the ordinance denying approval of the preliminary plans for the PUD known as Robertson South. In order to take this serious and rare step, I have engaged in a great deal of discernment and research. I present the following as justification for my desire to proceed in this direction, to solemnly consider the following. During our discussion of Robertson South, two important issues were raised. First, members of council expressed confusion as to how the plans were recommended by the planning commission in light of the issues and, the complex issues and significant public feedback. Secondly, PLK objected to the absence of rules in the PUD overlaying this property. Both of these concerns seemed important to understand. I spent the last week reviewing dozens of hours of planning commission meetings over the last year and reading our zoning regulations for PUDs. It is my conclusion that the planning commission, A, received serious and prolonged engagement from the public throughout this process. B, interpreted zoning codes that govern PUDs in a manner open to questioning. C, recommended council-approved plans that do not meet fire code. And D, recommended council-approved plans despite the building department's objections. In short, the recommendation of these plans was premature. The following are several specific zoning and PUD rules that I believe should be examined by council before allowing the preliminary plans to proceed by inaction. Furthermore, the code explicitly dictates that the planning commission and council are responsible for ensuring zoning codes are followed, and I quote, "to the most restrictive requirement outlined in the code." These examples, zoning code prohibits structures that are incompatible with the character of respective districts. PUD rules demand reasonable privacy for existing adjacent properties, and says that council can require steps to be taken in plans, in the plans to ensure this. PUD rules give council authority to increase minimum widths of streets. PUD rules require a minimum of 25% of land be common, open space to be readily accessible, available, and useful to all occupants of the PUD. When any of the PUD requirements are waived, the planning commission and council must determine the following standards are met by code. The plans must be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity. Plans must be served adequately by public facilities and, facilities and services such as streets and fire protection. The plans shall not be detrimental to any person, property, or general welfare by reason of excessive production of traffic. Aside from zoning rules, the plans have serious issues that do not meet Norwood's adopted fire code. After reviewing, reviewing planning commission video, I sought plans and documentation from the archives at the building department. I discovered two documents from the fire department to the planning commission dated April 29, 2025, and 20, May 27, 2025. These documents provided comments on the preliminary plans specifically about compliance with fire code. The fire department's comments included issues of fire hydrant spacing, water supply, the ability of fire apparatus to make turn, and width of streets. In the 4-June, in the 4th of June 2025 Planning Commission, the meeting, the chief of the fire department stated that the plans are non-compliant for Ohio fire code. And he also said, obviously, we have to have some changes to it as it sits. Once again, I'm trying to understand how we got to this point in the process with such disagreement over these plans. In the 4-June Planning Commission meeting I previously referred to, the chief's comments were met with resistance by the planning commission. The comments characterized the fire department's codes, the fire department's code-based objections as overly confusing and difficult to work with. It is important to note two issues in response to these comments. The fire department issued their comments to PLK through the planning commission in clearly and simply articulated documents, which I have copies of. Secondly, the planning commission should already be aware of the Norwood codified ordinance 1511.03, which states that Norwood has adopted both the Ohio Fire Code and Southwest Fire Safety Council Unified Standards. In the ordinance, council designated these as the City of Norwood Fire Code. The code in section B further states that where conflict exists between the Norwood Fire Code and any other ordinance or regulation, the more stringent one controls. Again, the chief has stated that these plans do not meet Ohio fire code, which is the less stringent code in this case. A certificate of occupancy could not be granted to this development with the plans that were before us. Throughout the PUD process, the Robertson South development has received an abundance of leniency in the interpretation and application of codes. In the case of fire codes, this development has been given the right to outrightly reject our code. I cannot fathom any individual or small business in our city being given the same leniency and ability to not comply with our standards. The residents in Robertson South, the neighbors, the residents in the Robertson South neighborhood deserve for this council to ensure the fair application of the codes which govern PUDs. The future residents of Robertson South deserve the council to uphold our safety codes to protect their lives and property. And I'm closing. Today, council is at a serious intersection that must be considered thoughtfully and wisely. Just as it was the mayor's right to veto our decision, so it is our right to take action we deem prudent and appropriate for the safety and best interests of our residents. For the reasons I have just articulated, I believe we would commit a dereliction of our duty to allow these plans to proceed. It is my belief that this council should proceed with an ordinance and vote to negate the mayor's veto.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Mrs. Hoover, seconded by Mrs. Bowling, is to receive and file the letter. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes. Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. We do have one absent member. Mr. Moore?
Through, sorry, Mr. President, so if, would now, to Mr. Gerton's point about the 10 days, and that's where it would now be an appropriate time? If, if somebody wished to schedule a special meeting, would now be an appropriate time for one to do that?
To announce when we want to call a special meeting, yes. Mr. Gerton?
I would like to call for a special meeting to consider this issue and have a public, open discussion.
A certain date?
I mean, according to law department, the 26th, but I don't know if we can do that with everybody's.
Mrs. Franzen?
To add to that, as a, just a point of scheduling, we do have basically a weird 5th Tuesday, next Tuesday. However, we can also consider it at our regularly scheduled meeting. I, my only question or thought would be, I don't know if there is some sort of time limit as far as when you can reconsider a veto?
Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not aware of any, any hard and fast time limit. I, I would, for me, and I think perhaps for the whole world, we would prefer we not drag it out as long as we possibly can. I think if council went past the next regularly scheduled meeting, then there would be an argument that, okay, you've gone too far, you've waived your chance to talk about it. So I think Tuesdays are always good, so next Tuesday makes sense for me.
Next Tuesday sounds reasonable.
So September 30th, what time do we want? 6:30, or do we want to stick with, do you want earlier, or do you want a regular? Mrs. Franzen?
I would prefer earlier would be great.
6:30?
6:30 would be wonderful for me. But I defer to those that have schedules that are busier at that time.
All right, so next Tuesday, September 30th, 6:30 PM, we would call the special council meeting. Mr. Moore, for that, to override that veto, do we need a resolution for that, or that is a simple motion? Okay. Anyone opposed to the September 30th date? Then we will have that posted and sent out to the sunshine list.
6:30?
6:30, yes.
Can we also make sure that Mr. Braden is aware of it since he's out of town this week?
Yes.
That'd also be a good reason to not do it this week.
All right. Any other items? Anything else pertaining to the special council meeting? All right. Moving on to the agenda, we have one absent member. Mr. Moore?
Motion to excuse Mr. Braden for his absence?
Motion by Mr. Moore to excuse Mr. Braden's absence, Mrs. Franzen?
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Franzen.